Welcome back everyone to today's city council meeting, Monday, January eighth, two thousand and twenty-four. I now call this meeting to order. Roll call please.
District one, council member Casey.
Present.
District two, council member Vera.
Present.
District four, council member Martinez.
Present.
District three, vice mayor Silvera.
Here.
Mayor Lopez.
Here. Please stand for the invocation followed by the pledge of allegiance. Today, our invocation is by Tim Chianosa from Big Valley Grace Community Church. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council, other officials. Thank you. Let's pray. Father, we thank you for allowing us to live in this great community and this city. Thank you for all the work and all the things that people do here to make this a great place for us to live. Thank you for the sacrifice of their families and the time they give. Thank you for your effort. Thank you for their consciousness for it. And so we just ask that you would give them greater vision as they deal with the things that have to be done, as they make plans for the future as well as deal with problems and situations of today. Or they continue to make this a place that people want to live and want to be, raise their families. And it's a place that great things happen, that those that would seek to hurt others would be kept at bay and kept away. So thank you for the great effort of that. Give them the wisdom they're going to need to get through the rest of this night and to make the decisions in the future. We thank you in your name and pray. Amen.
Moving on to citizens' communications. While the city council welcomes and encourages participation in city council meetings, adopter rules allow no more than five minutes. Resolution number two thousand and seven, one oh six. For expression of non-agenda items, matters under the jurisdiction of the city council and not posted on the agenda may be addressed by the general public. However, California law prohibits the city council from taking any action on any matter which is not on the posted agenda, unless it is determined to be an emergency by the city council. Citizens are entitled to address the city council on any agenda item subject to the five-minute provision. Anyone wishing to address the city council must adhere to the rules of decorum. The rules of decorum are posted outside the chambers doors. We are now open for in-person comments. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to make a comment? Excuse me. Brandy Meyer, even though you did step up, you are the first and the only yellow card that I have, so go ahead. I have this one here. This one, Mike Borges, is on item number nine. Yeah. Is there one more? Okay. And yes, I am correct. You are the only one for now.
Okay. I will go. Brandy Meyer, City of Series, two nine four four street here in Series and I reside as well.
Make sure that microphone is either pointed at you or is the microphone installed or?
Hello, hello.
There you go. Thank you.
Okay, Brandy Meyer. All right. First off, I want to apologize. I'm getting over pneumonia in my throat. Hopefully you guys can understand me pretty well. Good evening, Mayor, City Council, and city staff. It's come to my attention that the city council will be discussing the Series Water Tower tonight at the end of the meeting. I thought it would be nice to give you an update from the ad hoc committee. In August of two thousand and seventeen, I was appointed chair to the City Water, Series Water Tower Ad hoc Committee to research and gather information and fundraising to save the water tower. During my research, I found that the water tower was built in nineteen thirty-four by Chicago Ironwork. In two thousand and five, some repairs and new paint were added. Currently, that paint is chipping along with damage from rust and bullet holes. Without the repairs, the water tower will continue to deteriorate. In December twenty-ten, Toby Wells, the city manager at the time, received a quote from Cornerstone for over four hundred thousand dollars. The city did not want to invest that amount of money, so I requested that the city council at the time to allow me at least five years to find someone who could do it for much less. In the meantime, we have had three other city managers employed by the city, and my reports have gone to the wayside. Of course, during that time, we also had a pandemic which shut down the world for almost a year and left the next two years with limited resources. Now that that is all over, I would like to continue with our mission to restore the water tower. Attached, I gave paperwork to the council and to the city manager. There's a more recent quote from November two thousand and twenty-two for only eighty-two thousand dollars. Quote is to repair the top portion of the water tower, but not the legs of the structure. I am in the process of getting a quote for the structure repair. And with my research, I estimate that the repairs for all of it, including the top and the structure, may be between a hundred and sixty to a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. As you can see, the numbers have changed quite a bit from the first four hundred thousand dollars. I recently, not recently, sorry, I contacted Houston city manager, Ms. Mary Mayhew, because their water tower was repaired and it still looks beautiful. She is the person who gave me the contact information in your packet today. After I spoke to Bob at Gold Star Painting, I found out not only did he repair the water tower in Houston, but he is responsible for approximately twenty other water towers along Highway ninety-nine. So he does have the experience needed that we need for this project. Recently, I found out that there is a grant through T-Mobile for historical and community projects. I have set up an account and with your approval, I would like to apply for the fifty thousand that they are looking to give to cities for historical and community projects. Before the pandemic, our ad hoc committee raised about two thousand dollars, and that money is currently sitting in the City of Series Foundation account. We sold t-shirts. We had a celebrity waiter night at Alfonso's. We handed out pledge forms to individuals and businesses, and we even sold Christmas ornaments in two thousand and nineteen. A few months ago, I would promise another five thousand from a community leader for the preservation of the water tower. In two thousand and eighteen and two thousand and nineteen, I've met with businesses, nonprofits around Series, and everyone was in support of preserving the water tower. If you notice, several of our new businesses that have recently opened, they use the water tower for their marketing materials. Grocery Outlet used it on the first bags that they gave to their customers. And recently, Tractor Supply, which had their ribbon cutting and grand opening on Saturday, has a picture of the water tower right on the front of their counter. I even met a young man who has a tattoo on his calf of the water tower. Series Water Tower means so much to so many people and has definitely become a landmark just off Highway ninety-nine to tell travelers where Series is located. If our committee, if our committee can work with a city grant writer, I'm sure that we can find more grants to cover most, if not all, the cost to repair the water tower. If you are in agreement with me tonight and our Series, Series Water Tower is a historical monument that needs to continue representing Series, please allow me to meet with our city leaders, grant writers, our committee to continue work, that work that we started back in August of two thousand and seventeen. Without the pandemic from two thousand and twenty to two thousand and twenty-two, I am now close to working four years on this project. And this year will be the ninetieth anniversary of the water tower. I would like to move forward, apply for some grants with the help of the city grant writer, continue getting the funding needed to have her repaired and preserved during the summer, and hopefully have it completed and finished in the fall so we can celebrate ninety years of beauty over our series. This project has been very close to my heart, and I feel we are getting very close to getting a repair needed to make her look beautiful once again. If you have any questions, please let me know.
Thank you. Yeah, we have an item to discuss this on, number seven. Number seven is where the water tower rehab, so we'll have that discussion once we get to that item. Thank you for the information. Is there anybody else that would like to make a comment? In the audience?
Dave Prada Series, I really'd like to get somebody over Dog Park and, and do something about the gophers, between the gophers and big dogs. It's really looks terrible. Big dog size, they tore it, tore it up so much that because you're, you don't water properly, there's constantly a mud hole over there, so they bring, whenever they can, they bring the big dogs over on the small dog side, and they hear the gophers. They start digging. They don't want to play with each other. They just start digging. And most of the owners don't do anything about it, and so it's really looking bad over there. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Doug, is it, is it okay if maybe we look into something like that? See if we can do about those gophers. Thank you for the information. Anybody else?
Me, Yakin Series. Just want to recognize, happened on Wednesday morning, the removal of a banner. It was really misplaced. Shouldn't have been up in the first place. But I'm glad it's down and somebody did the right thing. And it's giving back. People that didn't voice herself. The idea of there's something for the citizens in Series to be proud of, and the veterans that come from these families that are proud of being here in Series and having a banner put up. It really meant a lot to me. I got the news kind of all of a sudden, and I guess you got to be a veteran to really appreciate something like that. Or a veteran's family, somebody that's been hurt really bad or wounded, or somebody that's got psychological issues, whatever they are. That recognition means a lot to a lot of different cities, and I hope that Series will maintain that to put up a banner. And I want to thank the person, I won't name their name, in city government that sent me a Christmas card. I was really surprised. Thank you. And I want to give a thanks to Marcy, Chief of Police's ongoing secretary for many different chiefs through the years. She put on a last minute what you call that? Onaway thing, kind of just, it was just for the citizens. There was one the next night supposedly for the chief that was a little bit more formal. But it was really nice that she did that, and she does a great job whenever these things come up. Thank you.
Is there anybody else? Seeing none. Believe there's an email, correct?
Yes, we do have an email that we received from Revender Man. This is Revender Man, owner of the Quick Stop on thirteen zero one East Service Road. The divider that has been built on Morgan Road has done nothing but negatively affect consumer traffic towards my business. Majority of my customers have already given me complaints about how impractical this median is for them to enter the plaza where the Quick Stop is located. We have had hundreds of individuals sign the petition in favor of an alteration being done to this median. This is not including the other signatures from the Magic Market located in the same plaza. The primary reason given to me on why the divider was built in the first place was for safety reasons. In the ten years I've been running this Quick Stop, I have not yet witnessed even one accident occur where this median has been built. Overall, this median has and will continue to do more bad than good, not just for me, but for every other local business located in our plaza. I hope changes are made. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. The public comment period is now closed. Moving on to appointments to boards and commissions. Item A, confirmation of the two thousand and twenty-four mayoral appointments to boards and commissions and committees. City clerk?
Thank you, Mayor. Each year, the mayor makes his recommendations for various appointments to boards, commissions, and committees. And before you, this item, attachment A, is listed, the two thousand and twenty-three appointments, and then another column for the mayor's initial recommendation for the two thousand and twenty-four appointments. So at this time, I'll hand the mic over to the mayor to lead the conversation on any potential changes or?
Thank you very much. As you see here before you is the list of my appointments. Is there any comments or questions from the city council members regarding this list? No comments or questions? Go ahead, sir.
We're talking about the, the actual selections yet, or are we going to let this be a public comment first, or what are we doing?
If you, before we make a decision, we can have a discussion and then we'll take it out for public comment and then bring it back for a decision.
I just, there are just a couple committees that I have served on for a year or two that I'd like to continue to serve on. That would be the Concerts in the Park and the Fire Contract Committee. Those two are pretty close to my heart, and I'd like to at least serve this last, this last year in my term, not knowing what's going to happen in November. Pretty passionate about both of those things, so I'd be appreciative if that would be taken into consideration.
Thank you very much. Is there any other additional comments from council members? Okay. I take this back to the audience. Is there any members of the audience that would like to make a comment or question on these appointments? Seeing none. I bring this back for a decision. The appointments that I had put together, I believe is, it is a good opportunity for new council, new council members to be a part of those new committees, some new commitments. And I think that they're going to do good on these appointments and boards. That being said, unless there's any additional comments, looking for a motion for approval?
Make a motion to approve the mayor's recommendations?
One second.
We get a roll call, please?
Council member Casey.
Yes.
Council member Vera.
Yes.
Council member Martinez.
Yes.
Vice mayor Silvera.
No.
Mayor Lopez.
Yes.
Motion carries four one.
Thank you very much. Moving on to conflicts of interest declarations. Is there anybody in the council that would like to declare a conflict of interest? Mr. Martinez?
This isn't a, Mr. Mayor, this isn't a conflict. I just wanted to let Fallon know that the Toami River Original Park Committee, the position under the mayor is an alternate. It's not a second on the committee. I found that out last year, attending one. I am the mayor's alternate, so it says, it doesn't say alternate here, but that second position is an alternate. Item thirteen on the, on the list.
Looking for clarification.
Who's the alternate? I'm sorry.
I, I am, I am an alternate on that.
I'll make that note. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. No declarations? Okay. Moving on to consent calendar. All matters listed on the consent calendar are considered routine or nature and will be enacted by a single motion, unless otherwise requested by an individual council member or public for special consideration. Otherwise, the recommendation of staff will be accepted and enacted upon by a roll call vote. Is there anyone in the council that would like to send item pool for further discussion? Rose Linda?
Five, I just to make a comment.
You just want to make a comment on number five? Okay. And then is there anybody else? Members of the audience? Was there any items that you guys would like to pull from the consent calendar? Seeing none?
Make a motion to approve items one through four and item six of the consent calendar.
A second then.
Roll call, please.
Council member Casey.
Aye.
Council member Vera.
Yes.
Council member Martinez.
Aye.
Vice mayor Silvera.
Yes.
Mayor Lopez.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Item number five? Rose Linda?
Five A, I just asked to be pulled because there was a comment or an event coming up that was kind of hidden in the fine print regarding disposal day coming up here in February. I'm just trying to get to page fifty-three. Get the details just, I don't know if someone wants to go into details about the community disposal day, or if they want me to read it off the packet?
Is that something that they, Sam, your department is running? This is the second year in a row? This is a part of the Cal grant, right?
Correct, Mayor. Yes, this is the second time we're going to have it this year. I'm hoping we're, we're going to have one next year. It depends on the funding that comes from Caltrans, but it's scheduled for February third, from eight o'clock in the morning to twelve o'clock noon.
Is, I know there's some details about what people can and can't bring. Is, is, do you have that on you?
Yes, as a matter of fact, the, our voiceboard analyst that sent, sent over the the details of the, the event on the flyers through, through the billing. So.
Okay.
So it was sent over, but I, I remember.
I know Rose Linda made a post. She created an event for that. You guys can go on Facebook and find that there if you need some more information on top of the city website. And you said that there is a flyer in, in everyone's bills, right?
Correct. Yeah, the, on our, on our report for this month, this state that the, the maximum seven tires will be allowed, four mattresses per vehicle, and no loose bag. Household garbage will be accepted at the event. So also, I mean, there's appliances that were there, were taken in, and TVs, mattresses, tires, garbage.
Okay. Thank you.
It's going to be successful like last year, so I'm hoping, I'm hoping the flyer would explain exactly what, what it really entails as far as function.
And you know when that flyer will be available, so we can all make sure we share it with our own?
The flyer went out into this month's billing, the January bills.
And then can I just get a reminder of, I think the leaf, leaf pickup ends, is it this week or next week?
The leaf, the leaf, leaf on limit pickup ends tomorrow, January, January ninth.
Yeah, it was coming soon, and I just want to make sure that I read it correctly. All right, that was the only things I want, just to make sure we confirmed. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional comments from the council on item number five? Any members of the public have any comments or questions on item number five? Bring this back to the council for a motion?
Make a motion to accept item five of the consent calendar?
A second.
Roll call, please.
Council member Casey.
Aye.
Council member Vera.
Aye.
Council member Martinez.
Aye.
Vice mayor Silvera.
Yes.
Mayor Lopez.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you. Moving on to council referrals. Council members request to have an agenda item placed on the future agenda. Pursuant to chapter two, city council meetings, J eight, city council refers to renovation of items on the agenda. Item number seven is water tower rehab, and this request was by council member Vera.
So I think Brandy kind of summed up a lot of what I wanted to kind of bring up. I know it's come up several times, especially when we discussed the budgets have come up in public conversations. I recently was at the McHenry Mansion and the, their museum, the museum actually has a picture of the water tower on the postcard of Series. It's the water tower. So I'm like, this is what they're selling to represent Series is this very old tower. So I just kind of wanted to see if it's something that is even feasible, is just to move forward, to run the numbers, get an official quote, to see if it's something that's even feasible at this time, or if it's not feasible, or figuring out the next step then of what we want to do.
Okay. Mr. Martinez?
Actually, I have a question for Ms. Myers, if she wouldn't mind coming up to the podium. Brandy, you said that the ad hoc committee was put together in two thousand and seventeen? Is, is that committee comprised of just citizens? Was there council members assigned to it?
At the time, it was just citizens.
The citizens, and do you know outside of yourself, are the other citizens on that committee still willing to move forward with the work?
I know of three that have been asking about getting back together again. I'm sure if I made some phone calls, I wanted to make sure before contacting anybody that we can move forward. We had a group of around twelve to fourteen who met regularly back in two thousand and eighteen.
Okay, thank you, Brandy.
Any additional comments from the council? Is it the council's desire to bring this committee back to life, or shall we just allow staff to put together a report? And Brandy can give Doug some information that she has? Bring back a report, we can, we're, we're going to have a further discussion about this item. Today is just a referral to be accepted by the city council to move forward. Is that correct, Nubia? Would you be willing to do that, Brandy? Okay, Mr. Martinez?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It would be my recommendation to bring back the committee, maybe have a council member be assigned to it and set up a time to meet and, and see if we can get some outreach to the citizens and see if this is something they want, but I would suggest allowing the committee that was started in two thousand and seventeen to continue doing their work.
Could that be a part of the discussion when we bring it back, Nubia? Because today, we technically, we can't make those decisions.
It's not a decision tonight, but a direction to staff to include as part of the presentation.
So you would include both staff and or committee? Then we can hash out the details. Good? Okay. So all those in favor will nod of the head? Thumbs up, thumbs up? Okay, we're all good? Okay, so we're good? Thank you, Brandy, for always being insistent with this water tower. Thank you. And also, thank you, Ms. Vera, for bringing this back to light, probably for the under time since I've been on the council. We'll get it done. You said it was the ninetieth year anniversary on this? Ooh, okay. I love it. Okay, thank you very much, everyone. And now move on to reports. I have nothing to report. Is any city council members have anything to report? Rose Linda, you sure?
I was trying to.
I know you got something.
Together, I know. With economic, I've been working, thank, thank you, Julian, for working with me. I look forward to, we have a couple of small projects that we're working on and a couple bigger projects, I guess is a good way of putting that. So we've been in pretty good communications about a couple of things that we would like to see, especially in my district, and some things that have opened up and maybe trying to make sure that those businesses stay successful in my district that are just recently opening. The homeless account is coming up. I know there's, they're looking for volunteers. If you're able to volunteer, please go online. We can also provide you some more information. We are also, again, that number is done in accordance with state law, so we definitely want to make sure we're advocating and getting a correct count, so we know exactly, especially if we're looking at bringing on a homeless advocacy team. We want to know exactly what our numbers are, so that way we can make sure we're utilizing the resources and getting the appropriate grants, make something like that feasible. And so that's kind of where I'm at right now. It's January, so there weren't too many meetings this month, but I look forward to running forward next month.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay. City manager? Anything to report?
I have nothing to report, sir.
Okay. City attorney?
Nothing to report tonight.
Any of the department heads, anything to report? Okay. The county supervisor is not present? We'll now adjourn this meeting and go to closed session for a conference regarding liability claims. Cal Government Code five four nine five six nine five. Claim it, Mr. Rafid, I can't pronounce his last name, Koshaba, and Toe One Incorporated. Agency claimed against the City of Series, a conference with labor negotiators, Cal Government Code five four nine five seven dot six. Agency designated representatives are city manager Douglas D. Dunford and human resources director Delilah Vasquez. Employees organizations are Series Police Officer Association, First Line Supervisors Confidential Bargaining Group, Laborers International Union of the North, America, La UNA, Mid Managers Bargaining Group, and Public Safety Managers. A conference with legal counsel, Cal Government Code five four nine five six dot nine D two, regarding one potential case. Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak in regard to this closed session item? I do have a yellow card. Mike Borges? You're up, sir. And I will have to say that this is the first time I've had somebody actually request to speak during a closed session item. Congratulations.
Well. Good evening, Mayor, Council. I'll try to keep my comments are extremely short. Our reason I asked to address this item is that I know compensation for city employees is always a difficult discussion that you will be having. But I'm here for one small portion of that, that I know this council has heard previously in open discussion. That concerns the staffing of our dispatch center for the police department. That is beyond crisis mode now, to the point where you have sworn peace officers that are filling in this position. I know they're a small portion of the department, but they're a very vital portion that needs to be considered. And I understand your concerns about compensation, especially in just one or, one portion of an organization. But I believe this is time when we need to start thinking outside the box and addressing it. I know there have been, in our calls at time, in the thirty-four years I served here as a police officer, two deputy chief, there was concerns with our dispatch center and a calls to contract it out. When we explored that, we found that that was not a viable possibility. Due to the staffing issues that the other organization had, due to the volume of traffic that our organization had, it was not viable. And then in this case, it would be even more so because you're going to add additional staff, even if you got rid of our dispatch center. Because there are clerical duties that the dispatchers handle that are, need to be addressed immediately. That would have to be, cause the addition of additional clerical staff into the police department to handle those, because you would be looking at a twenty-four-seven operation. I've worked for an agency that had no dispatch center. And in fact, in my last years there, I was actually working with our dispatch center that we contracted out to explore expanding the costs in our center so that those clerical duties could be handled. Because in process, when it was not meant that forced our public safety officers, our, my sworn police officers come off the street to handle a clerical duty because of the need to have that information entered. Missing persons, restraining orders, that are emergency restraining orders, stolen vehicles, there are others that have to be entered immediately. There's a time constraint. And either you're going to have a police officer trying to learn in that system, or you're going to have your dispatchers as already know. That is my comments, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mike. I appreciate your time. Anyone else? Anyone else? Okay, thank you very much. This meeting is now adjourned. We will report back once we are complete. Thank you.
Welcome back everyone. First item, item number eight, no reportable action. Item number nine, direction has been provided. Item number ten, no reportable action, stopless.